Workshop, on March 12th, 2019. And we're going to begin with a report and presentations from the Audit Committee. An Audit Committee audit. And we are going to ask Dr. Agusa to come back. And we thank you so much for the wonderful intelligence and dedication that you give to this position. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you want to hear the report first?
Pardon me?
I said, "You might want to hear the report first."
No, that's fine. Well, you know, my remarks weren't recorded, probably.
We do appreciate that. The Audit Committee, as you know, are seven volunteers from the community. We care very passionately about the school district. And even at times when we are saying negative things, we do hope that they will be used to help improve what's happening within the school district. And so, in that vein, we will get started. Our last meeting was last Wednesday, on March 6th. The first presentation was from Ruth Gruet. She is from Purchasing. And she is in charge of working with us for the RFQ that has been issued for internal audit services. And just to tell you a little bit about the RFQ, the kinds of things that are included in the scope of work would be, first of all, the risk assessment. The district did a risk assessment about two years ago. And so, if there's a different internal auditor, the first task would be to do a risk assessment. Usually, they identify work that needs to be done and prioritize that in a five-year plan. And then, that plan is reviewed annually based on specific needs of the school district. We would ask them also to prioritize the work that needs to be done. And then, each year, the plan is to do an audit of different departments. You would do several departments a year. And as you know, this July, there is a new state law that goes into effect that requires the school district to evaluate an audit every department over a five-year period. So, it's an effort where not just a plan that sounds nice, you actually have to do it. Some of the things that they're looking for when they do an internal audit, they're looking for evidence of deficiencies in controls, wasteful spending, fraud, lack of compliance with laws and regulations, as well as failures to follow policies and procedures. We ask the auditor, of course, to prepare reports and to give those reports to the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee provides some feedback. And then, a final report is prepared and presented to you. This afternoon, I'm going to talk about two draft reports, just their status, because the Audit Committee has sent the auditor back to make changes. And then, hopefully, at our next meeting, we will approve those reports. And the final documents would actually be presented to you at a board meeting. And one of the final things that they have to do is, once they've said to you, "Okay, these are the problems," or "The findings," a period after that, they go back in and look again. So, for example, one of the tasks we had set for ourselves for this year was to do what's called a post-audit review a par for MTC. In 2017, there was an audit, lots of findings, a lot of work has been done. And so, the auditor would like to go back in now, was supposed to go back in now, and look to see have those findings been addressed. That particular audit has been delayed because of ERP. It didn't make sense to go back in and look at processes that are changing as you implement the new enterprise resource system. And so, those are some of the tasks that are set for the internal auditor. And the qualifications we are looking for, first of all, someone who is experienced in internal auditing, experience and expertise with ERP software, since that's such a big priority for the district right now, as well as information technology. Forensic auditing, which is something we have engaged in in the last year or so. Data analysis, and an approach to how this person or this firm would go about working with the school district to integrate an in-house internal auditing function and work with the staff doing that. The Audit Committee is scheduled to meet next week, on the 20th, to actually look at the responses to the RFP. One of the things I did want to say to you is that I have come to the board, I think the last three times, and said to you, "We're in the process of doing that." I have not provided you with detail, because we were being very, very cautious not to give our current auditor any extra advantage, because he would be present at this meeting and hear that kind of detail of what went into the discussion. Whenever the Audit Committee has had this discussion, CRI staff has left, and even, you know, so that they would not be part of that conversation. So, we've tried very hard to make sure we maintain that professionalism and follow all the rules for keeping that separate. Before I go on, if you had any questions about that, since this is a workshop, it might make a little bit more sense to give you an opportunity to question each section rather than wait till the end. That's your choice.
Anybody? You're going to go.
Okay, we'll go on.
Ready to go.
Okay. The next area we talked about, Ms. Vedder from our committee, works with the Information Technology Group and the subcontractor to CRI, which is Silent. Silent is a top-notch place. They do some really important technical work. And one of the things that she has reported back to us is that the meetings with the staff in Silent have been very, very productive. There is, with the new staff coming in and just the work that's been done over a period of time to build that relationship, they're just, they're talking with each other, they're working as a team, they're really looking at and addressing the problems that the district has in this area. And they are making progress in addressing the findings from previous audits. The one hiccup we get into once in a while is that sometimes the staff will think the status of a particular task is at a more complete or complete level than Silent. Silent's assessment is a little bit more cautious. And a lot of times, that has to do with documenting the processes that are being put in place, particularly so you are prepared when new people come onboard, they can hit the ground running, as opposed to reinventing the wheel. And one of the examples given was disaster recovery. There's been significant progress in that area, which is truly important for this district. But they do need to develop more formalized procedures and policies. And so, they have to work through that difference in perception. We had similar things happen with ERP. And it's just a matter of building that team so that people kind of work through it and can address those issues. The one challenge we do have with Silent, they are great technically, they have wonderful technical documents they give the district, they have good conversations with staff. We have challenges getting written reports from them to give to you. And we have asked that these reports, first of all, they have to have non-confidential information, because of the nature of IT. They have to be written in a non-technical language so that people would understand. And we're really looking so that they can share with you. We had 40 findings. We've addressed 20. This is the status of the other 20. Something so that you, the public, the Audit Committee, all have some sense of where they are going. We have spoken with Mr. Shin about this from CRI. And we've asked that, not asked, we expect, that this will get addressed and that we will get more timely reports for public consumption from Silent. Any questions? Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, perhaps, if you recall, it's been quite some time since we received a report from Silent on where we are with regards to our system security. And I wonder if it may be time for us to have an executive session with Silent, for them to inform us of where we are, where we are on those security issues that were brought up in the internal audit report, the operations audit report, I think, from last year. If you recall, we had a very productive and potent presentation from them of where our security deficiencies were. And I think it would be good to get an update of how far we've come along with our system, because I think it's been a considerable amount of time. I don't know.
Okay. I think that's an excellent suggestion. Board Member Hope. Any question, you know, to our Audit Chair? Do you see any problem with our doing that?
No, I think it would be very helpful and very informative to the district. It's been almost a year, I think, since the last one. So, it would be very helpful to you.
Okay. Thank you for that suggestion.
And then, another question. You made a comment that one of the areas of a, maybe not so much a disparity, the staff thinking that they're in a perhaps better place than Silent's opinion. And what I would suggest, given our history with the ERP project, where we were kind of led to believe things were at a very different place than they really are, I think, personally, I would ask that we have the cold, hard realities from Silent, of where Silent, as the experts, believe our position is.
We will make sure that's included.
In progress, so that we should never again have a situation where the board is led to believe we are in a better place than we really are.
Sure. We'll make sure that's part of it.
Thank you.
Our next area is, I'm sorry?
Let me ask one question about that. We have this, you know, closed meeting. Is there a problem with at least the Chair of the Audit Committee being present at that meeting? Is there an issue with that?
I think Mr. Dai has to answer that, because we would certainly want Ms. Vedder to be there, since she works directly with them. I don't know what the rules are for a shade meeting, if more than one Audit Committee member can attend.
Yep. Excuse me. Mr. Chair, the reason for going into executive session is for security issues. If the Chair of the Audit Committee has a legitimate security need to discuss security issues, I don't see a problem with it. Okay? If you have more than one Audit Committee member, I think the security exemption would apply.
Okay. Then I'll be there.
Okay. I think it sort of kind of, you know, maybe I'm reading something in a suggestion of Board Member Hope, but, you know, if Audit Committee member, you know, Vedder could be there as well, I think that would probably be helpful.
She will.
We like to work her very hard, too. So, thank you very much.
And she certainly is important to be part of that, since she represents us, and she knows all those details that have not been shared publicly, so.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Board Member Hope. Any other questions? Okay.
Okay.
We look forward to you setting that up pretty soon. Okay?
We will do that, yes. Our next area has to do with the sales surtax extension. We had hoped to bring you a final report today, but we've reviewed this at our last meeting, and we've sent the internal auditor back to put in lots more detail. The reason for that is actually a good one. We are very sensitive to the board wanting to make sure the expenditures are proper. And we think about this 15 years from now, where we may not be sitting here, and someone starts to question was, "Why did you spend money on that? Why did you spend money on furniture? You're not supposed to." Well, we're getting those answers now. And so, we're making sure that this, especially this first report, is as clear, concise, has all that detail in it, so any question that may arise can clearly be answered. Going forward, it'll be a lot simpler, since we've gotten a lot of that kind of information taken care of. It focuses, the report focuses on the sales tax revenue, and also how that money is being spent. There has been a review of documents, the bond document, as well as the resolution that went out to the public, because there is some different language. That resolution is very important. This is what the public said you can spend the money on for this particular pot of money. And we're making sure that the funds are spent appropriately for that. There actually is a question about furniture. And some different opinions among people, based on just experience. You're building a brand-new school, you need to furnish it. Is that an acceptable expense? We had raised that question. We also, and that was in the report that Mr. Shin produced, we need an answer to that question. We ourselves, as a committee, raised a couple of other questions. There was an HVAC project at the support center. Is that okay? Because that's not actually a school, even though there are teachers who are working in the professional support center. There was also some lobby work done here for security and safety. Is that part of it? And we had asked the district to go to Bond Counsel and get us some specific answers. And in fact, we were given some, a copy again, of the letter we received from Bond Counsel last year when we asked about buses, and some other correspondence from Bond Counsel. And according to those materials, he has already said, "Yes. Furniture, as long as it's going to be around for more than five years, that's okay." And the other two projects, and everything else so far that we have seen in the list is acceptable. But to make sure that carries through 15 years from now, we have asked the auditor to go back in and for each of those projects, be very specific about what was done. If it's safety and security, specify how that addressed that part of it. And include in their information from Bond Counsel that, "Yes, these expenditures are acceptable," so no one can question it. And each year, we don't have the same thing coming up. We've also asked them to put in a lot more detail, so that, again, it answers those questions. There are some edits in there. And we are talking about the attachments to make sure that everything we put in that report is specific to the scope of the report, was the money spent properly. And so, we've done, I think, a pretty thorough job in that review. And it will come back to us at our next meeting. And then, a final report will actually be given to you. Mr. Shin will go through the whole multi-page detail, not the two paragraphs I just gave you.
Board members? Any questions? I have a question, and it concerns security, that it can be, money can be used to enhance security.
Yes.
And it seems that our Bond Counsel came back and said, "Expenditures for buses is not allowed."
Right.
If I recall correctly. Yet, the state of Florida says, you know, busing students is a security question. It has said.
Interesting.
And I'm wondering, and they are making law, or at least proposed law, to say, "Well, you're going to have to do more security, you know, for transporting students," which is going to add significantly to the operation, you know, investment and operation of every school district in the state of Florida, for security purposes. And our bond and resolution all talk about it can be used for security. And I'm wondering if there's any appeal from the Bond Counsel's opinion, you know, that while you can't use proceeds, you know, for, you know, purchasing buses. It just doesn't seem to square what, you know, our legislature, you know, defined security. And I think it's a very important issue, not only for us, but for every school district in the state of Florida, and very important for the security and safety of the students, that they reconsider their position. And I don't know how much we can argue, reargue that, or appeal that, but I think they're wrong.
The actual letter did not say, "You can't do it." It said, "It may be questioned, and maybe you shouldn't," and he recommended that we not. I think that's an interesting take. If, in fact, because of a Florida statute that said, "You must do something with buses, add more, change, whatever you're doing for safety and security purposes," you certainly could then approach Bond Counsel and say, "We think under these circumstances, we've met the letter of what's in the resolution." It's the resolution that's more restrictive. It makes sense to me, but I'm not a lawyer. And I think we're just being really cautious about how we spend the money. But certainly, if that were to happen, I think the committee would ask the district, "Go back to Bond Counsel, let's get that clarification. We'll include that in our report," so that it's clear in the future that that was allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I could.
Mr. Dai.
I'm not familiar with the letter from Bond Counsel, but I think there's two ways to look at it. One, if it is, if the restriction is based upon the resolution of the board, we may be stuck with that. On the other hand, if the Bond Counsel's opinion is based on IRS regulations, you can always approach the IRS and ask for an opinion and fully explain why your thinking is different than what we've been told.
Okay, thank you. I think the resolution uses the term "safety."
It does. It has the word "safety and security" in the resolution, I believe. Yeah. It does not have transportation. And that's where we got stopped with that.
Well, it's, okay.
It's an interesting question.
Do you have Board Member Hope?
Yeah, I think the issue relating to the proceeds from the half-cent sales tax had to do with, if I'm not mistaken, the resolution, either the resolution was broader than the bond covenants, or the bond covenants were, it had something to do with the question of the bond covenants versus the resolution. I can't remember which one was broader. But there was, there was a sort of conflict in, the bond covenants could be more restrictive than the resolution that called for the election. I think that's what the issue was at the time.
Okay, we can take another look at that.
Yes.
In light of the increased need being imposed upon us, you know, by our friends in Tallahassee. And that's a huge expense, you know, for this district. Even presently, the legislature only provides less than half of the cost of, you know, busing, you know, our students. And, you know, to be further restricted by Bond Counsel puts a hurt on us and on the safety of our children. Yeah, Board Member Golden?
Thank you. The resolution that authorized the sales tax dollars to be spent, was that a resolution that was created in the context of the current security needs?
Mr. Chair?
Okay. Board Member Hope?
The resolution was the resolution that called for the referendum to take to the voters to approve the tax.
Okay. And so, the question I'm asking is, how could a resolution that created the sales tax then be possibly have, be possibly construed to consider the security issues that have only arisen in the last couple of years? Not withstanding the fact that the legislature has moved the goalposts, so to speak. But it seems to me that the resolution that we're relying on, and the will of the voters that put all this into effect, couldn't have possibly concluded, reached the issues that we're addressing now. So, the question I'm asking is, cannot that be not so much a question, as much as a statement that we would make, that this was not contemplated in the beginning, we are mandated by the legislature to do it? You need to tell us why we can't, as opposed to trying to get to a point of, can we do this? It's always better to ask for forgiveness than permission.
Okay. Does that make? Board Member Golden, thank you. And I think that would be part of the discussion. When the district's opinion was, even before today, even before this legislature, was that buses were an integral part of providing safety for our students, for our children. It's always been, that's always been the reason for busing. That's an integral part of security. And so, the resolution approved by the voters had safety. And I think it's reasonable to include that, you know, the intended by this board for security was also an intent of the voters. But we have some Bond Counsel saying, "Oh, that's not security." I think it can be, you know, reargued, that it was intended for security purposes then, is intended for security purposes now. And money from, you know, this and similar resolutions is essential, you know, for the safety of our children. I think that's what it boils down to. This, Board Member Hope?
Yeah, and I think Reverend Golden brings up a good point. And this is, this is probably an opportunity. First and foremost, we may find that the bond proceeds from that particular bond have already been committed and are, will be spent by the time these buildings are finished. But I think it brings up an important point, that given new demands on the district around security, and legislative demands, and rollback rates, and things like that, perhaps it's a time for us to do a pretty detailed assessment of the district's debt, the bond covenants of each of those bond issues, to see, number one, how they, whether or not they're still aligned with our needs. But more importantly, a lot of these bonds were issued when rates were a lot higher. I know a year or two ago, in 2017, we restructured some of that debt and saved a considerable amount of money. And given the climate has changed, and the demands on the district have changed, you know, perhaps we should ask the superintendent to do a thorough evaluation of our debt structure, what the costs are, what the restrictions are in the bonds, given our current needs, so that we can come back to the board and take a look at what we may want to do moving forward with regards to ensuring that we have the necessary funds to operate, and as importantly, that we're getting favorable cost that we're being charged for that money.
Thank you. Board Member Hope? Board Member Golden?
Yes, and Mr. Chair, I think Dr. Hope said it at the very end. What I'm mostly concerned about is the fact that I don't want the Bond Counsel to justify any increases in the rates, or any changes in our rating, because of the exigencies that we do not control. That's the main consideration that I'd like to see driving us in terms of doing this. Because we'll always disagree on what is secure and what is safety. But when they reduce the rating, or when they increase the rates, that's a direct impact on our dollars, and I think we want to.
Those are, Board Member Golden, those are good considerations. And Board Member Hope, too. It may be, I don't follow the bond rating cost as closely as maybe you all, but it seems in light of our increased, improved financial conditions, it may well be that we can, as Board Member Hope suggested, get better rates, you know, through refinancing. Refinancing process itself costs some money. But it may be, in the long run, we'd be saving significantly by refinancing. And I understand Board Member Hope suggesting we ought to look into that. I don't see any reasons why not. But, okay. Any other questions on sales tax? Okay. Thank you very much.
Our next discussion has to do with the Agitex contracts. Last fall, the district extended the contract with Agitex, and then, a few weeks later, expanded the scope of responsibilities. And a question was raised within our committee as to the appropriateness of doing this. And we asked the internal auditor to look at procedures and policies related to that issue. He has, and so far, has found that everything was done properly. There was one piece, though, that had been asked, that has not taken, had not taken place at our committee meeting. And so, the committee asked for the report to be held until that could be rectified. There was an RFP issued last summer, shortly before the extension to the Agitex contract. And the work from that RFP was very similar to what Agitex is doing now. And so, the question was, with all of that happening, again, was the RFP, did that follow procedures? When it was held and decided to seal the information, was all of that done according to proper procedures? The problem we ran into is that Mr. Shin was denied access to that information because the data, the documents were sealed. And so, the committee said, "Nah, we don't think that's proper. Mr. Shin, by auditing standards, must maintain confidentiality of confidential material, so it shouldn't be an issue for him to see something like that." After the, so the Audit Committee said, asked the district- After the, so the audit committee said, asked the district to reconsider. After the meeting, I met with Mr. Shin, Mr. Titlebaum, and we had Mr. Dai on the conference call. And we talked through the issue. And it was agreed then that absolutely, Mr. Shin, in his capacity as an internal auditor, should be given access to the information. And I will tell you, it happened immediately. The very, I think it was the next day, Mr. Titlebaum very graciously met with Mr. Shin. They went up, they looked at all the documents. He had total access to everything. And so the report will be completed and presented to you shortly. Okay, so we want to thank the district for acting so very promptly to address that concern. You know that access is a big one for us. And we're pleased, amazed, and very thankful that it just happened. So, thank you for that.
Any questions? I don't think we have any. Thank you.
Okay. And next, we've been doing interesting things with the audit this year because of ERP. That's been the focus. And we've had to delay some things as some work was done with ERP. And so we've had a change in the audit plan, which I'd like to present to you. Because the committee would like to recommend that you accept these changes as briefly as I can explain. There have been three special audits to date. Last summer, CRI was asked to participate in the investigation around what was going on with ERP. So there was some time spent there. We had a special audit for homeschooled students. And the audit committee actually asked for some extension to that because we want to do the follow-up phase to when the students have actually been placed in homeschool, have the proper reports been submitted. And then the third one just came to us from the district. In the past, it was the practice when a bookkeeper or principal moved schools that there was an internal audit done of the accounts at the school. That's best practice, but it was stopped years ago. And so we've had some principals who have been moved, and they've actually said, you know, we should get back to this. And the audit committee agrees with that and would like to begin that this spring, to the extent possible, to start whenever a principal and/or a bookkeeper is moved, that there is an internal audit that is done so that everybody knows that from the get-go, all of the accounts are in order, and so the principal can hit the ground running with that particular school. All of those kinds of things would take some extra hours, about 224 hours more than we had originally committed. The sales surtax, because we've gotten so in-depth and detailed with this, is going to take about 65 additional hours from what we originally committed. And so what we've asked is, also because of timing, where some of these other things have taken the internal auditor's resources, in terms of their times and days to work, we've asked that some of the audits we had intended to do under the risk assessment that are at lower risk level, that are not a top priority, be moved to the future. And that would include student demographics, student services, and transportation. And I'm not trying to push off the transportation too long. We really need to do an in-depth one, and I will push that that one starts this summer. I was a little reluctant to say that to you today. We are, as I talked earlier, doing a par at MTC. And again, because of some work that still has to be done with ERP, which will delay some of that, we thought we could start it this year. So we would decrease the hours assigned to that from 200 to 100. And also capital expenditures. There are some specialists who've been taking a look at what would be done there. They're starting it shortly, I think at the end of this month. And they actually have said it's going to take more than 100 hours. They want to begin with the high school, and the high schools alone are estimated to be 120 hours or so. So we take the hours from MTC and move those into capital expenditures. The net result of all of this is the same hours. We are committed to not coming back to you and saying, up the budget. We're trying very hard not to do that. So we have 1,990 hours. We have enough hours to do this work as outlined to you. I saw the looks when I said transportation. I commit, we will start it for the next school year and make sure it is done thoroughly. And they will hold me accountable for that. And so will you. So if you are accepting of this, we would ask for your approval, and we will move forward on that.
Okay, we're in workshop, but any questions regarding this, though? Board Member Kennedy?
Thank you. Dr. Grusso, the 224 hours for all of the special audits. My question concerns the audit hours for when there is a leadership change at a school. So this, the number that you used on that piece that went to the 224, is that just the admin changes that we know of as of now? Or have you budgeted for maybe one or two more changes?
For this year, we're talking about three schools, beginning there, because those admin changes have taken place already. So that was how, we were approached, could we do that this school year? And then this summer, there will be some more moves. We would do the same thing this summer. So that would be built into the next year's plan.
Okay, got you.
The one that begins July 1st.
If we have to. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Board Member Golden?
Thank you. Dr. Grusso, apparently there was an agreement reached with the internal auditor to provide a certain number of hours of service, as well as a certain amount of money to do that. What I'm hearing you say is that even including these additional three efforts that you would like for them to do, the money will remain the same and the hours will remain the same. Okay, so my question to you is, we just keep renegotiating hourly, year by year, every other year, however it is? Or when do we reach a point to where we might be looking for a fixed cost relationship between an external, internal auditor or not?
Yeah, I stepped up so I could hear you.
No, that's okay.
So, because I know they're going to say, use the microphone. I understand what you're saying, and I think that might be an appropriate conversation for the board. You will be issuing another contract this year. I don't know what the responses are, because I know we asked hours as well as costs. But the board certainly could have a conversation about if they wanted to have a fixed cost. The way it is costed out now is different people who work on different tasks, there are different costs associated. And so we ask that they actually specify the different levels of an employee and what their hourly cost would be. And then there is a set amount that the contract is for, and we do not exceed that amount. Usually, we actually turn money back in. But I think that's certainly, to Reverend Golden's point, it may be something the board wants to talk about in the future.
And I guess the starting point is, who audits the auditor? How do we make sure that what we are doing is in the best interest of the citizens who ask for this in the context of the sales tax money? Which...
That's the charge to the audit committee. That's, that is our charge, is to monitor the work done by the auditors and bring the information back to you. That is precisely why we exist.
So, okay, so I understand who they, I know they work with us. What I'm concerned with is, how do we determine that the work, the input that they're receiving is economically the best that we can, that we can get? Certainly, we wouldn't expect the auditor to report on the auditor, unless you're saying that there's expertise in the audit committee to accomplish this.
Yes. Most of the audit committee are accountants, auditors, CPAs. There's only one who isn't.
Then the question that I have to ask is, if we have all of this in the audit committee, then why isn't the audit committee functioning as the auditor?
Because, oh, sorry. They work for free.
Because, I guess we are the auditors of the audits. Our role is to act on your behalf and to oversee this as an independent board, as an independent committee. That's what we do and report back to the board. You actually contract with auditors who then lay out a risk assessment, lay out a plan of action. And we monitor their hours, we monitor the time they spend. Each of the members of the audit committee have an assignment, just about all of us. Ms. Vedder does the IT, I've worked on ERP, we have someone who does payroll. So they work very closely with the auditor and the staff. So that's our monitoring role, and that's really what our role is, is to monitor on your behalf, because it would be hard for you as individuals to have to oversee that.
And so the answer to my question is that we are relying on the audit committee to validate the integrity of the work of the internal auditor.
Exactly.
Am I right?
That is exactly true. And that is why we are independent and we are unpaid, so that our allegiance is to the school district and to doing what you have asked of us.
Then my last question is this, at least as it relates to this. I understand what you're saying, and I understand how this relationship works. What I'm concerned about is whether or not the parents, the people, the community, in plain English, can get an understanding as to what has happened, why it has happened, how much it has cost to happen, and what is the benefit from it? That, that's, that ultimately, us sitting around talking is great, because we do this with the board. But we are doing it on behalf of the constituencies that we serve. And I wonder how we get it from this table out to the people in such a way that they, that they can accept it too? I have no reason to doubt that we don't have good people on the committee and good people as internal auditors. But how do we convey that to the public? That's, that's really my question. And if that's a part of your report.
Interesting question.
May I respond to that?
By all means.
Yeah. We do that by having workshops open to the public. They can come here presently, they can listen, they can read interpretations of it through, or the press and, you know, other. They can attend our school board meetings, they can watch it on TV. They can come to our meetings and ask questions. It's, it's an open process. And that's the best way known to, you know, communicate. Some people are more interested than others, but they also sometimes write letters to staff. They write letters to board members, asking questions about outcome, how much, why. And I think all of us, you know, do our best to answer it, or to at least forward it to appropriate staff persons, with a superintendent, to please respond, you know, to the public. And I don't know where there's a better effort, at least, you know, to communicate what the money that comes from the taxpayers from Tallahassee, how it's being used. We rely, as a board, upon expertise that is beyond the abilities, at least me, of board members to, you know, fully understand and investigate. It is, it takes professional expertise, you know, to do that type of investigation. And that's one reason why we have, and we're required to have, you know, professional auditors. We go a step further, we have a great audit committee that's not on staff. You may recall, there's discussion about, in some facets of auditing, we've discussed about having employee staffs to do rather routine things, you might say. But it would still, we'd still be looking to, you know, professionals to make a report, and then that report to be reviewed by an audit committee. And I don't think there's a better system of communicating and being open, you know, to the public than the one we have.
Mr. Chair, what you just said, I wish we could write it in stone or blood and just pass it out. Because that's precisely what I'm hoping that we can achieve.
Okay, thank you.
That, that's the kind of thing that I think needs to be in the newspaper.
Yeah. It's an open process.
Hey, Ryan.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I think we're...
I have one last issue.
Yeah.
The last one was, Mr. Sauer joined our meeting. The homeschool transfer report had six recommendations in it. He presented an action plan to us for those six recommendations, and they are underway. He is meeting with the principals. They have already reduced the time when a student can be transferred to homeschool without that letter of intent coming in that is signed. And then next year, the transfer will not take place until the letter has been signed. They will be having annual meetings to make sure everybody is fully aware of any changes to the student progression plan, as well as to state rules and regulations. And he is working to gather information about digitizing student records. And he's actually spoken with some districts about a multi-year process to do that. We'll tell you age-old story of, they tried this once before, and there was no funding. And so this is something, if we're going to commit to this, we would ask the board to commit multi-year, because you can't do 50,000 students in one year, especially as you have another grade coming in every year. You really have to have a multi-year plan, doing multiple grades at a time. And so there has to be that commitment, so that we can ultimately, I think the district would be well-served. If they could digitize those records, they would be more accurate. And also, and the other issue that they had to address was access to those records. They are secure files, they are children's files. And making sure they're under lock and key, and they are fireproof filing cabinets. And he is getting all of the information for that. And hopefully, that will be included in the budget this year, to make sure all of the schools are up to speed and have the best practices there for maintaining security of those files. And I think that's it.
Question, Board Member Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. I don't have a question, I just have a comment that I wanted to share from the audit committee meeting last week. When Mr. Sauer was talking about that, he, this was a powerful visual for me, but I believe, did he say he was at a conference or a presentation? And a, someone in the leadership of another school district who had gone through this digitization process, they freed up, I think he said, three warehouses? Three warehouses filled with paper records into a handful of thumb drives. So they freed up that much square footage in school property for better use than paper files. So I just wanted to share that, because it was a pretty dramatic example. So, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair of the Audit Committee, and your fellow Audit Committee members. You do a terrific job. Okay, Mr. Kennedy, Board Member Kennedy is going to, I think that's our next item on the, or, excuse me. I freaked, I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I apologize. I went to number two, but I forgot, we got two number ones on the agenda. It's public comment time. And Board Vice Chair Messenger, take it away.
There are none.
Okay, you were very concise. And, all right. So the next item on the agenda is a report from our superintendent regarding elementary, middle, high school staffing plans for the 2019-2020 school year. Superintendent Saunders, take it away.
Great. We're going to pull up a PowerPoint, and what I'm going to do is, I'm going to kind of just go over the PowerPoint with you. And then when I'm finished, each of you have been giving a book with even more information. So I'm going to just kind of give you a couple of things that you can look at. It's just more detailed, because it has everything. But I'm just going to go through and kind of highlight some examples and really some changes from last year to this year. So, you know, one thing I think it's important to note is that our staffing plan is built on a formula. It's formula-driven. So, and all of that is in the index, so you know how we allocate teachers based on student allocation, size of school indicates what staff is assigned, so that it's fair and equitable for all. The other thing that you know, those schools that receive grants, such as Title I or SIG grants or so forth, those are, those are items that are added on top of this basic formula. So right now, all you're seeing is what is funded out of our basic allocation. We set all the grant positions after we get the tentative budgets for those. So those will not be in here yet. As you can see, the elementary ratio is listed right there. Probably the one significant change that you will see this year that we altered from the prior year is with the elementary counselors. Last year, the ratio was 1 to 800, and we changed that 1 to 500. And we are definitely ensuring that we're adding a significant number of counselors to our elementary sites, specifically starting with Title I and then looking beyond. One area that we did feel that, based on all the changes in legislation and need, that was an area that we really needed more support. So other than that, that was the biggest change. And we did increase the number of PE teachers. If a school had over 750, we did add an additional PE teacher. When the legislature... When the legislature mandated 150 minutes a week, some of our larger, uh, PE, uh, some of our larger elementary schools had a tough time scheduling that, so we did add an extra PE teacher with some of those larger schools. Uh, there really weren't any changes on our non-instructional staff, um, and some of that is set by other departments. The middle school staffing plan is very similar, similar, but we didn't have any changes, um, to any formula or anything for middle school this year. High school will look exactly like it did the prior year. I wanted to run through an example of what a school sees, so I just showed you an example of, uh, an elementary school. Elementary is set up a little bit different than secondary, but this is what our allocation sheet looks like that schools receive. You will notice in red, uh, I indicated what the size of the projected students were the prior year. It helps me to see the change when I'm looking at them. So as you can see, ABLE, this current year, uh, projection was 511, we're now projecting them at 482. That does not include any pre-K units or VPK units, it's just K to five. And as you can see, you're probably saying, well, there's some lesser kids, they had 25 basic units, they're still gonna have 25 basic units, how does that happen? Well, it's all based on a formula. If it's point five or up, it rolls up, so it could very well, you could end up with fewer students or you could end up with a slight increase in it not change the overall teachers based on that formula. But if you can look at the kindergarten units, it's 4.39, it rolls to a solid four. But if you look at 4.72 for second grade, of course, it, it rolls up. So that's just kind of a basic. The ESE units are set by the ESE department based on the load of students needing services. So those are identified, um, as well as ESOL based on each individual school. So those departments come in and, uh, pull up the number of students and assign those supports based on who's attending their school. Yes, yes, Charlie?
Yes, sir. Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Marner. Um, Superintendent Saunders, I just have a question, and as long as ABLE is up, um, let's use ABLE as an example.
Okay.
And I'm looking at, and you and I have talked about this before, how there is this cutoff at 500 students, uh, y- you'll get another counselor, um, th- there are others that are 750 or 900, administrators are based on, but I, I just want to use ABLE as the example because they're, they are, they were at, or they are currently at 511. They're projected to go to 482, which would mean the loss of a counselor.
Well, no, they wouldn't lose any. We were changing the ratio to add one, so they still have one, uh, y- you know, it was at one to 800.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So the second one, but...
I was thinking they were going from two to one.
No.
Going from 511 to 482.
No. So it would be increasing, but, but your point is still taken. If they were 511, they'd get one, they're at 482, they wouldn't get an extra, so, uh, that's a difference between two or one. I do believe it could very well be for this situation because they do have some pre-K classes. As you can see, they have an, they have two ESE pre-K, uh, classrooms in that middle box, you can see pre-K.
Yep.
Um, those are not factored in the K to five unit, so if you look at those pre-K numbers, it's going to push them over 500.
Gotcha, okay.
So we will take that into account, therefore they would qualify for that extra counselor.
Okay. Um, generally, generally speaking though, if we do have a, a situation like that, does it take until the first count of the school year to remedy that?
We're, we're staffing all this today. It, it's projection, our first job fair where we will post next year positions will be in April. So that's the great thing about how we staff and fund everything. You have to start way in advance in the spring on what your anticipated guess is. So we're going ahead and basing, based on our projections, staffing and letting people hire. And if you find at the 10-day count that it's a swing...
10-day count, yeah.
Yeah, then, then you will either add additional or you will remove some if there is a significant shortfall of numbers.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah. But our, our trends have been pretty consistent lately, so we tend not to see a big shift.
Yeah, we've, we've been very, very close to the targets every year.
Yeah, we're doing a great job. Uh, Board Member Golden.
Yes, as I have said previously, and I think in board settings and in the meeting, that our numbers in terms of, what did you say, guessing as to how we guess?
Yeah, yeah, project, yeah.
Uh, our superintendent, uh, has consistently, uh, been if not the lowest, one of the lowest counties in the state in terms of the difference between actual numbers that we're budget on and projections that we're making in the spring. But I do think it's important that we not forget that we are budgeting for a year that begins in July based on funding that's gonna be determined in the next 58 or 59 days by the legislature. And so there's always an inherently built-in capacity for disaster.
I like that point.
That, that, that's always, and so what I'm concerned with is that we make sure going forward, that we try to, um, not second-guess each other. I guess that's, that's the point, that, that, that we, that we really begin to trust the numbers and the experience and expertise that we, that has brought us thus far. Because I, I did, well, as all of you have already done, I did go through the school finance forum, uh, to learn more about this, and, and the key to this is what we're talking about right now.
Mm-hmm.
Those 10-day projections that come up after the budget has been set, after the budget has, at the local level has been presented. So I, um, the, the only question that I, that I do have is how can we at this stage the staffing needs of the schools that have greater disparities, that's what, yeah, greater disparities as a consequence of geography, uh, as a consequence of their, um, the...
Student demographics.
Demographics, yes. How, how, is that a factor that we can use in creating good budget numbers for us?
Yeah, yes, sir, and those aren't added as much on this basic plan as much as we add on the Title I services, the extra ESE services, and the extra ESOL services on top of this. So they will end up receiving more supports, more help, more assistance based on when we see what they have and what their need is after we receive their school grade. When I get third grade numbers of possible retention, I will go back and make adjustments in adding more teachers and paras to support those needs in third grade.
I'm sorry, the, 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 Mr. Chair, the, then the only other consideration that I have, which cannot be demographic, because I know all of our Title I schools are like in the middle corridor, but a lot of our students contribute to the third grade reading level crisis that we have. One out of, one out of two of our students. How do we factor into what we're doing this year and how do we project that to move against that number, that intransigent number of children who cannot read at the third grade level by the time they get there?
Well...
Or, or, does, does this encompass that? Are we able to?
We, we are doing some things in this formula and I don't think it's on that page. It will be...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean the presentation.
No, 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 because it, it's still part of this. You will see in our categorical sheet, Kelly, it's still on the elementary, so go, nope, it's on ABLE's. Uh, do one more. Okay, right there. What we've done to try to improve, uh, our third grade reading initiative, and, and we've done this over time, this will be the first year that we're gonna see those significant changes, is we've placed in a second, significant number of pre-K classes, whether they're Title I pre-K, VPK, ESE pre-K. But if you will notice on ABLE's plan, between the ESE pre-K and the Title I pre-K, he has three pre-K classrooms. The, the wonderful thing about having space or capacity in many of our schools, I'm able to put pre-K in some fashion in, in many additional sites. Uh, for example, the new elementary school will have two VPK classrooms added. I was able to add Mills will get theirs back. I was able to put some more at Williams. So it's not just the Title I, uh, because you're right, it's not a Title I issue, even though it's a more significant issue there. It, it is an issue district-wide. So it is imperative, and we spend a lot of our Title I dollars, that, but they can only be applied in Title I sites, but adding pre-K classrooms where we're able to. The difference between a, a Title I pre-K and VPK is it's all day if it's Title I. What we do is we pay for that extension where VPK is not a full day of service. So, um, that is one of the things we're doing. And then we put extra supports in the schools that have a bigger need in third grade, we give them extra teachers and extra paras in addition to.
Okay, before we get off the DPK level, I know that there's a ongoing contention with respect to the teachers before grade one about bonus money that...
You are correct.
They would like to be in that. So I just want us as a board to have an understanding as I understand it. We can't take the money out of certain parts to do that. If we're gonna implement this, we gotta take it out of some other pot. And I'm just hoping that this is such a high-level priority that we're willing to, to do, we can't give lip service to this and then talk about the money not being there. We can't let the left hand give and the right hand take away, that's, that's the whole point. And I, I just want to make sure that the money that we are giving will stay there and be used to, to, to overcome this, this problem for the long term. Does that work?
Yes, sir, and I am putting on a workshop, uh, I believe it's the first one in April, so that the board can discuss that very issue, because I do know we have 80 to 100 pre-K teachers. Um, and I, I know you're referencing the best and brightest bonus of the effective or highly effective bonus money, 800 or $1,200, which is significant. And the state does not include any type of pre-K teacher. And, um, some districts have already decided to, uh, fund it out of their own funding sources and not relying on the state to get that. So i- I do have that on a workshop so that we can discuss, we can see how much it costs and then make a decision of how we should go forward, not only in the current year but moving forward. Uh, I do know that there are many teachers in the pre-K that, a lot of them are certified all the way through fifth grade or at least through early primary years, that some feel, why am I gonna be a pre-K teacher and miss out on dollars if I could go to kindergarten or first grade and be eligible? So I, I think you're right, if we're saying it's a very important initiative for our grade level reading, then you've got to ensure you have proper teachers or you're not going to get the improvement that you want. It's all about the teachers being in the classroom. So, agreed. Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, thank you Superintendent Saunders and, uh, Board Member, uh, Golden to, you know, bring up a, an issue that I'm, I'm sure every board member is, you know, concerned with and will be, uh, discussing that, uh, in workshop and maybe in a meeting shortly after that, uh, to address what I think everybody believes is a, a, a very important issue for not just those teachers but our, our system and the kids. And, uh, thank you for, uh, asking for that workshop. Uh, are there any other, uh, questions on that? I guess we proceed with the presentation, I think.
Uh, this is, uh, our projected forecast for this next year, uh, a little over 49,000. Again, those are our prior forecast years, um, and, uh, so, you know, we're, we're projecting coming in just a little over 300 this year. So we're gonna have an improvement, we're gonna have, uh, a little bit of growth, but what we've seen over the last few years is our kindergarten numbers have come in very flat-lined. So kindergarten, first and second, we're not seeing an increase there, so, um, that, that's where our minimal growth is coming from. So we'll, we'll see, there's a lot of things that could be happening in the next year, but, um, that, that's where our forecast number is. And then if you look at the sheets that I've provided thereafter, uh, it's just broken down every school. So if you want to just have a easy way to look and see how many basic units are allocated per site, per, you know, per area, that's what that is. Same thing with middle and high, and, uh, I didn't add any of those extra services in there, these are just basic units. So, uh, one of the other things that I wanted to emphasize, uh, you know, our formulas didn't change very much, we didn't add a bunch of new initiatives except changing the formula for guidance counselors really in elementary, um, but we know we have three new schools. So I wanted you to see, uh, what the cost is for staffing these three schools. Now remember, that doesn't mean they're all three extra costs because in many cases, because we're moving students, those teachers are coming off of prior staffing formulas and cost onto the new ones. But I do have formulas, uh, in a staffing plan for each of them, so you can see kind of the net cost of what the staffing of each of the schools are projected at. So that one is Barbara Harvey. Then I have Mona Jane. And then the high school. What's interesting is they're all three very different, but they're all three almost the same cost of, of staffing initially. It's a little over $2 million for each one, but that doesn't mean it's new cost to the district, it's just what the initial costs are those. So that really is our new, um, expense. So I only want to show you a, one thing in your book, I've given you each a book. Um, I do not have the departments in there yet, um, but will, so we will recollect these and add the departments for, um, the later one. But really the one I want you to, this one has every school staffing plan, so where I gave you an example for ABLE, I, I've given you everyone and I've given you definitions and so forth. I just want you to turn to the last tab, because really that's what you care about. What's it costing? What is this staffing plan projected to be for the whole school, for the whole district? And that's what the last tab will have. I start with an average teacher salary, um, because again, until we have everybody hired, we don't know what the teacher individual salaries are. So that's how you start with your projection of building your budget, is we compute, uh, an average teacher salary and we put this year's wage. Remember, for the most part, it equated to about a 2% raise that everybody received. So that is added to on top of last year plus the three new schools, that's really gonna give you your net increase of what the cost is. So on the very last page is what the projected cost, the grand total for the school-level staffing plan is on the very last page. But that does go back to the projections. Reverend Golden, if you're off, you could lose money or need more money, so you need to be pretty close.
If you're off 1%, I guess it comes down to something like 1.66 million dollar difference.
Well, I think we take it from the... Well, I think we take it from the board's salary, sir.
Okay. Well, that's, well, you accept a check. Okay.
But you're, I mean, you're right, you, you know? Twenty teachers, give or take a million bucks.
Yeah.
It's what it, twenty teachers, give or take a million.
Well, I was looking at the grand total for school-level staffing. Uh, a hundred and sixty-six million, three hundred and fifty-nine. And I'm saying one percent of that is.
Right.
One point six, six million.
Mm-hmm. That's about a little more than twenty teachers.
And that's, that's our best bet.
That's your best bet.
Okay. And it's Board, Board Member Golden says you, you make pretty good bets. And it'll take you up to, up to Tampa to someplace where they have bets.
I like that.
The, the, the question that I would have though is, is a reciprocal. That is that if we have to come up with one percent more, one point six million dollars in terms of overall operational funding, where do we go to look for that? And how do we, how do we, how do we address that? And how much time do we have to, to address that? Because it, it seems like this has got to be done soon. And we won't know until October. Is it the first calculation that we?
Well, if you're talking about the first survey is at, at the ten-day, but the survey is in October that you really get counted for state funding, you know, actualities. But y- you know, i- it's very important, the whole process, that you're pretty, you know, that you've really thought strategically about what you wanna fund and what initiatives so you can build that in place of your budget. Because you are right, when you're in October and you wanna make a change or you want to put something in place that, that has a, a significant cost, you have to amend and take it from someplace because you've allocated all of your money someplace. So that's why, uh, it's real important that, a- and this is the time for us to have conversations, that while we're building the budget, we do need, uh, what the board's initiatives. If the board has any specific request or things that they want to work on or funding initiatives placed there, we do need to know that soon. So when we come back in April, that'll be the next thing that's asked. Uh, if you have a specific project, um, I, I know you're very, you're, you're working with our grade level reading initiative. We're trying to get all that funding from other people. Um, you know, there's many things that, you know, Charlie and I are working on too. Um, but we do need to know those initiatives so that if we do need to budget or account for, for items, we can do that while we're building the budget. It's much easier to do that now than after, you know, we get into the school year.
Does anybody know what percentage of total operat- operating funding this is to the teacher, to the, the labor funding?
It's about sixty-eight percent.
Oh, my goodness, that sounds like the chief financial officer.
It does, doesn't it?
From there, from the back of it.
Yeah.
Just boom, just like, say again, please.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight percent? This is sixty-eight percent?
Yeah.
It's, uh, that's an estimate.
Yeah.
Okay.
It ranges sixty-eight to eighty depending on the year.
Okay. And so there's not an awful lot of other areas to even go to, to take from. That's what, what I'm hearing, that's it. Okay.
Yeah, mo- most of the money does go in, in, as well it should.
And I, I guess maybe for educational purposes, in terms of the, the help that we could use and get from the community. Because I know everybody in the community says we wanna have better teachers, the best in the classroom. Well, that's fine, but if we are off by just one percent, we've gotta go dig from some other pot. And those are much smaller pots and they only constitute a, a much lesser part of the overall operational budget as it is. So somehow, uh, we, we need to be incorporating more of an appreciation for the need or let the community know. Just because we got this money with the, I guess we'll talk about that later, the, um, the, uh, millage money, just because that didn't solve all of the problems that we got.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, uh, Board Member Hopez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. A, a question, I, I know you said we were not gonna know the, the, the actual figures because we don't know what pays step-level individual teachers are. Uh, but in the proposed unit cost, we've, you're, you're incorporating forty-six thousand, six hundred. Wha- what is our starting baccalaureate teacher compensation at this year?
I think it's forty-four, starting forty-four, one? Forty-four, three?
Okay, um.
When anyone comes into the district, we give them eight years only.
Right, that, well, that's the current policy.
That is correct.
We're gonna have a discussion about that sometime in the not-too-distant future. Um, so these costs, these costs don't include benefit costs?
No.
Okay, so we're, we're just talking, so this really doesn't come close to reflecting the base costs for staffing these schools?
Yes and no.
Because we have benefit costs.
Right, but the, the, this is our start. This is our starting point. This is how we start with the first wave of building the budget, yeah.
Okay, so, but, but even at the basic level, our base staffing cost for these individual, uh, employees is gonna be more than a hundred and sixty-six million dollars.
Last year, our base.
No, 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 if you include their benefits, I mean, what we pay them in a paycheck.
I'm, I'm hearing you.
Okay.
Last year when we started our, um, funding formula, it was at forty-five, seven?
Right. All right.
Yeah.
I get you. You hedge your bets.
You have to hedge a little bit.
Right.
But that's with the raise that's come in and, um, through the policy, I think it was put in place in twelve thirteen, that eight years was all that was given for, uh, seniority for the maximum amount. So what you're seeing is you're having many more on the upper end retiring and then you're hiring in.
The, the grandfather population is retiring?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I would be interested sometime, at some point to, to, this is, this is the base salary projections.
Right, correct.
But I would also like to see what the, the, I guess the, the base benefit costs are.
When we come back and do the next one in June, you, you will have more. And you'll have the departments and so forth in there as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Are we all through here or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
Um, any other comments or questions? I don't think she's going anywhere, we hope.
You're going, I'm all right.
Thought, thought we took care of that, okay.
No, you can continue.
The, uh, all right, um, next item on the budget, or not on the budget, on the agenda, uh, is our very own Board Member Charlie Kennedy. Uh, he was gonna talk about Altogether Conference, uh, that he attended.
Sure.
Uh, up in St. Petersburg, I believe.
Uh, in the interest of time, I'm gonna very, very quickly introduce this. And team, if you guys wanna head up front, um, Board colleagues, let me just take you back to the end of the last board meeting that we had, the convention center. And I talked really quickly about the Altogether Now Conference, um, which is focused on how school districts can best serve L G B T populations. And, uh, lo and behold, I got up there and there was a whole team of people from Manatee County Schools, um, a few of whom are standing here now.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, so I made, uh, made a connection with the group, um, found out there was already, you know, we, we have this team in place that is working on it. And I wanted to give you a full picture of the information, the statistics that were shared because I was kind of rushing through it at the end of the last board meeting. And instead of me talking about it, I wanted the professionals to talk about it. Um, I have the, yes, I have the keyboard. Um, so I, I guess I, I'll keep the keyboard, you guys can just direct me through it.
Okay.
Um, but, um, Mr. Minor, I first wanna thank you, like sincerely thank you because you got this on a board workshop very quickly. I know this is of personal interest to you, um, as well. So I appreciate, I appreciate that support. Um, so Michelle, who is, um, Messina, who is a supervisor in our student services department. Uh, Michelle is up first. I'll have Noel and Karina introduce themselves when they get up here. Uh, Nathan, I see you're in the room, so I, you know, um, I don't want you to miss this opportunity. Uh, Nathan is one of our community partners. His organization is called Also Youth in Sarasota and they serve many Manatee County students. And so I'm glad to see Nathan, uh, made it as well. So, uh, we'll get Nathan up here at the end at some point. Um, we're, we're not gonna let him stay in the back. So, uh, Michelle, I'm gonna pass it over to you, okay?
Okay, great. Um, good afternoon and I want to thank the board for allowing us to present, um, giving us this opportunity to present at today's workshop. Um, you're gonna be hearing mostly today, um, from two of our committee members. Um, this is Karina Lee and Noel De La Cruz. Um, they are our chairs for our L G B T Q committee, um, plus committee, thank you. Um, and, um, before I turn it over to them, I just wanna give you a little bit of history of the committee so you kinda have kind of a frame of reference, um, of who they are, kind of what's been happening in the district thus far and, um, some new information that we're hoping to be able to share, um, with the board today. Um, the committee started in two thousand seventeen, fall of two thousand seventeen. It, um, was established as a result of a training that the student support, um, student services staff had attended. And, um, they were pretty moved by the training that they, they had participated in as well as what they were observing, um, with regard to the needs of the students that they were providing services to and supporting. And, um, as a result of that, the committee was established, as I, again I said, um, fall of two thousand seventeen. And, um, it started off with three committee members. Um, and now we're up to six committee members. Um, as I said, Karina and Noel are the committee chairs, they're co-chairs. Um, and what they've really been doing for the first, um, year, year and a half now is, was really just trying to educate themselves and, um, start to educate some, um, of the district, um, staff and faculty. Um, they have attended several, uh, different workshops and training. Um, they participated, this is their second year of, of attending the Altogether Now Conference. Um, I was able to attend myself this year for one day. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go for two days. Um, but I was happy that I was able to actually get there and participate for one day. So in a moment, I'm gonna turn it over to them and they are going to, um, share some information with you with regard to, um, what, um, they learned at the committee, um, some of the work that they've been doing thus far and where they're hoping to go. Um, wanna start off first though with, um, just kinda giving you the mission of, um, the committee. The mission of the committee is to foster positive mental health, establish safe and inclusive schools and promote academic success for students who are or are perceived to be lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and/or questioning. And the reason why, um, there's that little piece in there that says, um, or are perceived to be is because the research shows that students who are perceived to be are also at risk for being bullied or, um, being victims of harassment. So it's important that we include those students, um, as we're looking to support the students in the district. Um, so as I said, they're gonna share information from Altogether Now, um, what they learned with regard to what other districts have been doing, um, what seems to be working in other districts and where they hope to go, um, as a committee. But before I turn it over to the two of them, um, just want to, um, just kinda throw this out to kinda give some context. Um, I want you to just kinda think about, imagine in our district, what percentage of high school students do you believe identify as, um, L B, L G B? Um, and just kinda keep that in your mind for a moment. And, um, in a moment, um, I'm gonna, Noel's gonna share that information with you. Uh, we're not gonna advance it yet though, right? Oh, yeah, I don't know what happened. Did it, was it from here?
I'm not sure. I don't believe so.
Charlie?
Mr. Kennedy, do you know how to?
The escape key, it's the, it's the cure-all.
Okay, so hi, I'm Noel De La Cruz. I'm a school psychologist and I just wanna second what Ms. Messina was saying. We thank you for allowing us to, to come today and share some of the work that we've been doing as well as some of the information, um, about our L G B T Q youth because, um, it's a topic that we're very interested in. I think as we go through some of the statistics and needs of this, um, population, um, I think you'll all be as moved as we are, um, when we, when we hear about it. So, um, some of these statistics that we're going to go through are from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey from two thousand seventeen. Um, this is a, a voluntary survey that's given to high school students across the state. Um, and so as we're going through some of these numbers, it's definitely important to keep in mind that it's a voluntary survey. So it's likely that a lot of these percentages are actually an underestimate of what we're actually seeing out in the schools. Um, but still obviously informative for, uh, moving forward. So, um, when we look at students who are identified as L G B, um, in high school, um, across the state of Florida, we, we're looking at about fifteen point seven percent. Um, we have anywhere from about fifteen to nineteen percent when we look at some other, um, counties where we've been able to get percentages. Not every county has, um, percentages that are calculated, but Orange, Broward and Duval, um, are, are counties where we can see some of the prevalence there. Um, transgender is not something that we have specific s- statistics for that come out of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, although, um, Broward was able to put some items in where we can get some estimates of numbers. Um, and when we look at their county for transgender students, we're at about three point four percent. Um, you know, so when we combine our L G B T students together, we're looking at, at almost twenty percent of our population, you know, one-fifth of our students. Um, that as we go through some of these statistics are affected and are meeting with some pretty adverse outcomes, um, to be honest. And so when you think about our population in Manatee County with, for almost forty-nine thousand students that we have, it's a pretty significant number of students where we need to really explore how we can better meet their needs. Um, so as we go through some of these statistics, most of them are, you know, we're comparing heterosexual students with students that are L G B. Again, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey doesn't have specific, specific statistics for our transgender students, but it's definitely important to keep in mind that research, um, shows and the statistics that we do have from other studies shows that our transgender students actually face even higher adverse outcomes, um, than our L G B students. And obviously, mental health is a concern of all of ours, I think, for all of our students. But as we go through some of these numbers, um, paying attention to just the disproportionality of what greater risk, um, our L G B students are facing than our heterosexual students. And so, um, L G B, L G B students are about four times more likely to report suicidal ideation, create a suicide plan and attempt suicide compared to their heterosexual peers. Um, L G B students are four times more likely to report experiencing dating violence or forced into sex compared to their heterosexual peers. And L G B students are two times more likely to report feeling serious depression or skip or miss one or more days of school because they feel unsafe at their own school.
Okay, so, um, this graph is very telling. Um, I mean, look at the disparity, um, for L G B students who were bullied at school. Um, electronically bullied, I mean, that's just as high as other forms of bullying. Did not go to school because they felt unsafe. And, I mean, really, we need to think about that because their attendance is still a concern and it is still, um, it still correlates with, um, the ability to read. Um, and also finally, the, uh, difference between, um, students in the L G B, uh, community that were threatened or injured with a weapon at school. Um, more statistics here, um, forced to have sex, experience physical dating, violence, depression, that's huge. I mean, it's really unbelievable. Um, suicidal ideation, create a plan to attempt or have a created, a plan to attempt suicide and finally, um, have actually attempted suicide. So I'm just gonna pause right here for you to look at that visual and imagine that's some of our students.
Um, when we look at harassment, our L G B T Q youth are facing, um, significantly high. When we look at harassment, our LGBTQ youth are facing significantly high levels of harassment based on sexual orientation, so 74% verbal harassment and 30% physical harassment. Our LGBTQ youth also unfortunately face high rates of family rejection. And so when we look at our homelessness statistics and their representation in the juvenile justice system, it's just really concerning what percentage they are within these subgroups. And so when we look at our unaccompanied homeless youth, 40% of our unaccompanied homeless youth are LGBTQ students, and of which 31% of those identify as African-American. And LGBTQ youth are two times more likely to end up in juvenile detention facilities compared to heterosexual youth, and of which 85% are youth of color. And, oh, I did it again. Some of the things that we learned that's quite interesting at the conferences that we've been to is something called intersectionality. And so when we start learning about, you know, youth are not just LGBTQ, they're not just youth of color, but they face, you know, they have multiple statuses. And so youth that might be minority and also LGBTQ youth of color who are LGBTQ, they face even higher risk factors and more adverse outcomes. And so that's something else that, especially looking at, again, our homeless and our juvenile justice system, something that we also need to take into account. And then substance abuse, you know, more likely to be using cocaine or offered, sold, or given illegal drugs on school property. So at the Altogether Now Conference that we talked a little bit about when we first opened up, it was a really amazing experience, mostly, you know, it's great to hear what's happening out there in the state of Florida, what other counties are doing. Every county is kind of at a different point in this journey, you know, of different policies and different ways that they are helping these students. And so it's great to go and get some ideas and hear what's happening. So at Altogether Now, there were 31 of 67 Florida counties represented. Sarasota was there, Hillsborough was there, Pinellas was there. There was a superintendent panel, a school board panel, and so it was really great to hear what's happening. And so some of these district initiatives that we've listed are just some of the ideas of things that we've heard that are really helping to make sure that our schools are safe places for our students and that we have best practices that are being implemented consistently in schools. And so conducting LGBTQ roundtables with different community agencies and district leaders three times per year, developing LGBTQ resource guides for the district so that schools have guidance and best practice, it's actual manuals that are out in the schools to help with different situations that might arise, resources for students, resources for GSAs, increasing those GSAs, the Gay-Straight Alliances, with some districts having GSAs in all high schools. We know that GSAs improve school climate, not just for LGBTQ students, but for all students, and decreases bullying. So that has positive effects throughout school buildings for all of our students. Identifying equity liaisons in each school to support school culture initiatives that are inclusive for these students, and so that there's actual personnel on campus. You know, not right now, we're co-chair of this committee, but, you know, envisioning a future where on every school campus there are liaisons that are able to help, you know, carry out these practices and be there for students and for staff. Creating strong alliances with community partners, ensuring that the voices of LGBTQ students, staff, and stakeholders are heard. A lot of the school board panel actually spoke about having students come to the school board and speak about their experiences and sharing what they're experiencing in school. And then hosting and attending GSA summits where all the GSAs in the schools get together and do team building and, you know, find new resources. And it's just, it was just a really positive experience for the students and the GSAs.
So here's what we've done so far. We've been provided and helped to provide professional development, thanks to Equality Florida and also youth. In March 2017, Student Services, our Student Services Department of School Social Workers and School Psychologists were trained in one of our meetings. In July 2017, our administrators, principals were trained. March 2018, school counselors. January of 2019, a district in-service was offered, and we, I'm very, we are very proud of that, where on District In-Service Day, we had a morning and afternoon training or workshop, and 50-plus staff attended. They were made up voluntary school staff, like school counselors, school social workers, and school psychologists, dropout prevention personnel. March 2019, we will be, or Nathan from Also Youth will be doing a training for the district nurses. And when I say training, this is always ongoing. This is professional development. So I use the word very loosely when I say training, because again, we always have to develop. We always have to continue to train. So right now, in our county, there are four GSAs out of six high schools. So last, I think in the fall of last year, we had zero. And by the end of last school year, we had three, and now we have four. Policy, what we'd, what, right now, what we have is an enumerated anti-discrimination policy. It's number 2260, or item 2260. What's the good news? In other words, what can we do about it here in Manatee County? Or what can we aim for? If there are at least 11 staff members trained in cultural competency at each school site, then bullying for LGBTQ youth students will significantly decrease, and that has been shown statistically. And what we're talking about when I say cultural competency is simply the training that I alluded to earlier with Nathan from Also Youth. And, ooh. Also, we have a gentleman from Equality Florida that can provide training to really help staff that are interested find language and find a way to show these students who are often in hiding that they are there to support. Positive outcomes are possible, and here's where we can start. Assuring LGBTQ plus youth students that they are not alone. Improving feelings of school connectedness. And promoting communication and understanding within the school community. Finally, reducing vulnerability. And I just have to stand on the GSA bandwagon, the Gay-Straight Alliance bandwagon. You don't have to call a GSA a Gay-Straight Alliance. You can call the club by any name. But it, as Mrs. De La Cruz alluded to earlier, this also has been shown. Schools that have a GSA on campus, even if a student is not participating, even if a student is not part of the LGBTQ plus community, the rates of bullying go down because they feel like this is an environment where they too can be accepted, all marginalized groups of all socioeconomic classes. So, and all of color, all types, and all walks of life. So really, what we would like to do and what we would like to promote is that all students feel safe and accepted. And here in Manatee County, wouldn't it be nice to do more than survive, but build environments for our students in our schools where they feel they can thrive? Thank you.
And just some future goals for our committee and for our district in general. So like we were saying, continuing to train and retrain faculty and staff members. It's really an ongoing process. I think this is an area in general that keeps changing, research is continually updated. There's always new things to learn. So continuing that training and expanding, you know, who the faculty and staff are that are receiving that training at all levels within a school and within a district. Continuing to support current GSAs and increasing access to GSAs in every high school. And then that resource guide that we previously spoke about, creating a district LGBTQ plus support guide to make sure that we're, one, implementing best practice, and then, two, that those practices are consistently being utilized across all of our schools. So no matter what school a student is in, their experience is inclusive and is welcoming, and they do feel safe. Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments?
I have a couple of comments, but I'll wait.
Okay, do you have any data on the number of middle schools that have GSAs?
In our district, I don't, to my knowledge, there's none.
I think Sarasota has one. Well, yeah. Like across the state or?
Of middle schoolers that identify as LGBTQ or of GSAs?
No, that have GSAs.
I don't have that on me right now. Nathan, do you know? Yeah.
Yeah, and Nathan will, can talk about Sarasota County, you know, that would give us a pretty good idea. But right now, it's more of a challenge to start that. I believe in middle school, schools have found that to be a challenge, and it could be a transportation issue. Many of our students, many students that attend GSAs still have not come out to their families. When we attended the Altogether Now Conference, there were several students from different counties that spoke on the panel that came out to staff in their schools before they came out to their families. So I think those are some hurdles that middle schools face in trying to start a GSA. Never mind developmentally, they're still very, very, much maybe less open. But we really, our goal, our hope, our wish is to get GSAs started in all six of our high schools first. And we would love to start to look at doing that in middle schools. We would love to have that.
To the best of my knowledge, sir, we don't have any middle school GSAs in Manatee. There's one in Sarasota currently. And that's actually down in Venice.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're member Golden.
I'd like to find out if there's any relationship between the leadership cadre that's being developed in the high schools and this effort through Student Services to try to sensitize the student body to the particular needs of LGBTQ plus.
When you reference leadership within Student Services.
No, ma'am. Student bodies.
Student body.
Specifically, do they still call them student councils? I haven't been in school in so long. Is that what it is? Okay, I want to know, how can I become the president of the student council of my high school and not have participated or supported, what do you, the GSA? Yes. Why is that possible? Even if we started now, how long would it take us to get the freshman class president, the sophomore class, the junior? See, that leadership group, this, there seems to be a lot of adults trying to deal with children. And I'm just thinking that maybe we might get more help.
Right.
If children were exposed as soon as possible to this, and they brought that along with them as a part of that leadership.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, I think what you're saying is it's just the importance of it, you know, not just coming from the adults, but the support coming from the students themselves. And I think that Karina spoke to that a little bit when she kept referencing the statistics that when there are GSAs in schools, that all students benefit from that. Because part of what's communicated is that, there's two things. There's one that, you know, they observe that anybody within the school can be, is accepted, and that it becomes something where they're recognizing it as something that these students will be supported to. So I think that that's part of it. I think there's nothing specifically right now that's in place for that within our district. But I mean, I, you know, I think, you know, we've talked to the committee. They started last year, these two, you know, kind of got the ball rolling on it. And one of the things that I've said to them is, is try to focus on what are your three top priorities? Because we're just getting, you know, getting things started. And, you know, I think that they kind of looked at these being the three things of if we can kind of work on this. But I agree wholeheartedly that when you can bring it up from the student body and have supported that level, it's very powerful.
I apologize for asking you such a hard question. That was unfair to ask you that, because you probably, but at least you get an idea.
Yes, absolutely.
Did you want to add to that? The other piece of that is students feeling safe to ask that they even want to have a GSA in their building. And so a lot of the trainings have been teaching staff members how they can show that they're allies. You know, they can start a GSA just like any non-curricular club. If those, if non-curricular clubs exist in a high school or in a middle school, students are entitled to, you know, are allowed to have a GSA as well. I think sometimes students don't know who to ask to sponsor something like a GSA. And so a lot of the trainings, like I said, have kind of focused on teaching staff members, you know, having safe space stickers, having things that show that you are a visible ally so that students know who kind of their safe people are and who they could even go to to even start a GSA. So I think that that's, at least from some of the things we've heard at the trainings, that's a piece of it as well.
I appreciate your question from two directions. And I would say your instincts are correct. Peer-to-peer education, based on research, we know is amazingly powerful. I can only speak to the experiences in both Sarasota and with our longest partner, which is the Out-of-Door Academy. So that's a private school in Lakewood Ranch. They've had a very successful GSA for six years now. They've actually been our lead partner in our progressive prom that just happened March 2nd. About 40% of our chaperones are Manatee teachers, including committee members. And 80 of the over 250 tickets we sold that represented six districts were Manatee students. So, and we had 30 schools represented overall. We have been doing, and have been invited in in Sarasota to do training to what you're speaking to in the HOPE classes. So we do start addressing that in ninth grade. And as we have supportive personnel and GSAs there, we see the resiliency of the LGBT youth rise to the top. And they do seek leadership positions, and they run for positions in their clubs. And then that transfers to other student leadership positions, and so it breaks the cycle. And so I think both pieces, both the training and the leadership potential is exactly a place to go. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, Board Member Hope.
Yeah, I have a question. I'm going to be careful how I phrase this. What, and let's just talk about the high school level, although I agree we need to be doing something in middle schools. What, if any curriculum do we have with regards to human social behavior, human sexual development? The public health person in me is, you know, human sexual behavior. A lot of this is, if we're not doing something from an education authority perspective to teach sensitivity, understanding, compassion, recognition of differences, where are students getting that? And, I mean, do we have curriculum that's in the schools for human social behavior, sexual development, or any of this?
So I think I would have to defer that question as far as what's in place right now. You know, I know that that is definitely something that when we, when we learn about best practices, that that's one of the key pieces for best practices. Then when we look at our curriculum, when we look at what literature is out there, that we're keeping that in mind and we're being mindful about it. As far as what exists right now within the district, as far as initiatives, there's nothing that I am personally aware of. I don't know if Ms. Saunders wants to add to that?
Okay. Superintendent Saunders, do you have some comments to add to that?
We do have a few things. One of the things that we received through our grant, you know, is it's your choice comes in. One of the things that we received through our grant, you know, is it's your choice comes in, but it it is with schools that volunteer, and there are a lot in the middle schools and so forth, but they do bridge on those topics, and we pull students in. If you're taking a course in high school, it would run through our HOPE class. Now, that's if you're going through the traditional standard instruction. We do know that there are some ways that you can meet that requirement without going through that particular class and 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 get those initiatives. But that health component is supposed to go through and give you all those type of initiatives and thoughts. So that's predominantly taught in ninth grade. That is weird.
It's not the chair, okay. Okay, the 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 board recognizes.
Well, we do, but does it attach to every student every way dealing with that? It it's the biggest brush that we do have, but yes. But but could we add more to that curriculum in light of these new, you know, concerns? We probably could really go back and identify and add more to those curriculum.
And I bring it up because, and I can't use the mic, but when when I was a young teacher who did not intend to go into the profession of teaching, but I taught gifted a honor of biology.
Biology.
Ninth grade.
Yes.
In Hillsborough County Schools in the early eighties, I guess.
Anatomy and physiology.
I I was fresh out of graduate school, public health school, and I I determined that since I was the department chairman, and I did not care whether I had a teacher's certificate in the future, I engaged the students in
Honest conversation.
Honest conversation about biology, and 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 they were engaged. And and I understand that it's a few decades later, but a lot of these issues, I believe, were a result of a a lack of knowledge, lack of understanding, lack of education, sensitivity, training, a lack of compassion. And I just wonder, I I realize it's a challenge to figure out how to to present that in in the environment that we're in, but I guess the question would be, are there school districts in the country which actually have curriculum that can can help students to to work through this from both a peer perspective and then an individual perspective, so that the focus can be on learning and helping with the continued social and 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 psychological development of of these students? Because this problem is not going to go away, and and it's a it's a challenge.
To answer your question, the week after Altogether Now, the Stonewall National Education Project, which has been a national conference addressing this topic, was held this year down in Boca Raton. It travels. It was held at FAU. That conference for seven years is where we see the leading districts from across the nation go, and the answer to your question is yes, there are. And most of the work has been done the last seven years, so you're not behind. There are amazing things happening. They're happening on an individual level. I have been in class, I'm a former teacher myself in Hillsborough County and a graduate from Hillsborough County. So I was there from ninety-nine to oh-nine and also did the same thing, teaching seventh grade science. So I appreciate that background. But you have amazing instructional personnel, bringing in vibrant, diverse curriculum individually. And I I think there's great opportunity, but yes, it's happening on a piecemeal approach, but it it is happening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hope. Board Member Golden.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Dr. Hope's has started talking about the elephant in the room. As long as we talk about health, and as long as we talk about sociology or psychology, the sociology, the psychology of hate, we're on solid ground. The problem that we have is that so many people want to reduce these important public health questions, these important sociological questions, to political ideology. There's a move afoot right now in the legislature to require schools to offer as an elective course the Bible. And it just goes kind of down here from there. What I would appreciate, because as much as this is a real problem, all of us have gotten emails lately about the ongoing problem of racism and antisemitism that exists in our schools. And it doesn't start in the schools. See, all our schools close down at six o'clock. They don't open back up till six o'clock in the morning, but it's brought to the schools. And I don't know how we're gonna deal with that, but if we don't, then a lot of the work that we do doesn't really make a whole lot of difference. Even if I teach you how to read, if all you're gonna do is use your reading to learn how to hate more, doesn't make any difference. And so I would particularly like to continue this workshop modality to establish what I think Dr. Hope's is alluding to. A a, an innovative, bold approach to trying to get beyond some of the old stereotypes that we have about each other, some of the old stereotypes that we have about people who are different, the other that exist between us. And I I would, I would hope that that becomes an ongoing priority for us. And it it, I might be so bold, Brother Kennedy, you brought us this far. And if we can just keep this on the on the front burner, that we don't just let this be a one-time episode, that from time to time, we engage in an affirmative, oh, God, I don't want to use that word. That we engage in an in an assertive effort, if you will, to try to 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 overcome some of the old stereotypes. And I'm sorry, I didn't mention sexism, because that that's a big issue. We just got so many isms that really prevent us from being all that we can be. To as the board of education for the whole county, we ought to be setting the example for how we are going, for modeling the kind of community that we that we want to see. And and more than just an informal or a classroom, it's an attitude, it's a perspective that I'd like to see. And while I'm at it, everybody's gonna write and say, the preacher said. Let's be very clear, the preacher is not preaching. I wasn't asked to serve here to give you my religious doctrine. I was asked to serve here because I'm supposed to be trying to help the community be better. So don't go out here and say, I I said it's all right to teach sex in class. I didn't say that. But I did say it's necessary that we teach health. That's important.
Thank you, Board Member Golden. Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you, sir. I I know we've gone long, and I'm glad we've gone long. This conversation has gone places I didn't expect, but it's gone in good ways, so. I just want to touch on a couple of things to close. Kind of the, the, at at the overall view, when this topic comes up, and this has been touched on, we as adults need to get out of the way, because we have, we, the older generation, has hangups about this. This topic comes up, people giggle, and they roll their eyes at each other. So we need to kind of check ourselves and let kids take the lead. And and as far as leadership positions or whatever you want to call the club that's in the school, let the kids form the club and let them name it whatever they want and do whatever they want with it, I think is is the important. But like, we as, we are the educated adults in the room, and we are the ones with the hangups. Not the, the, those of us that have been in classrooms and 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 been inside schools, younger generation, this is not even a, this is not even, except for your rare exception where somebody's uneducated or, you know. For the most part, this is not even a problem for young kids. It's 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 usually an issue for us, the the older generation. I want to come back, Noel mentioned the term intersectionality, and I I mentioned this a little bit at my close last. But this school climate issue, it, there's intersectionality, not just for marginalized groups, but for what is the hottest topic in Florida right now, which is school violence. So we we want to reduce bullying and harassment for marginalized kids or or anybody that finds themselves in a vulnerable position. But we want to have a school climate, an open environment where kids can share and be listened to. And, you know, that, and Reverend Golden, I completely agree, this is not a one-stop shop. This is not a one-workshop item. This is, this is an ongoing conversation, because that school climate piece is is so important. So Noel and Karina, Karina, you never introduced yourself. Could you tell everybody who you are?
Yeah, I'm Karina Lee, and I'm a school social worker. I've been here for nineteen years, and I was raised in Manatee County, so my children went to Manatee County schools, so yay.
And and I just want to close with that. I want to thank Karina and Noel for your leadership in this in this issue, and you are the, you've gotten this started, and and like, we we kind of talked about it at the meeting last week. We want to, we want to activate people in our district who are allies in this, but they don't know how to help, they don't know where to start, so thank you both for giving them that.
Can I just say one more thing?
Of course.
The other thing is, some of this is already happening in small pieces, like our anti-bullying curriculum and character education and social, social emotional learning. You know, we'll see it happen kind of like in bursts, like the Great Kindness Challenge, or it's Anti-Bullying Month, so we're doing it, you know, throughout the month of October, and there's these things that are happening. I think taking those things that are already happening and making an effort so that they're continually occurring throughout throughout the school year. And when we look at things like curriculum and our reading materials and different things that kids see all throughout the day, that we're making sure that they're seeing materials where there are, they're represented, you know, where there's materials where they're seeing LGBTQ, you know, people in history and in literature and and the, and in terms of intersectionality, that piece of it as well, you know, our students that are minorities, that they're represented and that they feel like they're being seen and that they're safe. So thank you for allowing us to come today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on our agenda, and thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for helping organize this great presentation. The, I'm gonna have a enterprise, Nick Chode is going to give us an update regarding the Enterprise Resource Program. Thank you. Thank you, Nick.
Let me just take a second to get this queued up, the top one. Here we go, thank you.
I'm just gonna give a kind of a notice, because technologically, we have to take and set up things downstairs beginning no later than five twenty, we may have to cut this short after about fifteen minutes.
Okay, not a problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll try to keep an eye on the clock.
Okay.
So thanks for having me. My name's Nick Chode. I'm the manager of the ERP Support Effort. I came on board in January. I understand your last update on this was in December. I think it was the December, one of the December workshops at least, so it's been three months since then. So I'm, I plan on, I'd like to give you an update on where we are. What I was going to propose I start with today is give you a high-level look at systems rollouts and how they evolve through their maturity. And it's just to give you a point in time, here's where we are now versus where you started, where you're going to end up being. And I'll give you a a list of accomplishments since the last update, what we're currently working on, and a longer-term look at where we need to put some improvements in place. Feel free to ask questions as we go through this, especially if you don't understand something I've mentioned. So every system, especially systems that start from the beginning, day one, will follow typically a four-step process. The first step is a reaction mode. Something very critical is broken. It's all hands on deck. For example, you can't, we can't make payroll, because we just launched this new system. It literally is all hands on deck. And you see a series of those as you're trying to stabilize the most important operationally, the most operationally important parts of the system. The unfortunate aspect of reaction is you're not, you start to accumulate issues that you can't get to to fix, and that's typically in the form of data. Bad data gets entered into the system over time, and it becomes kind of a debt. So the next phase, after you've come out of the reactionary mode, is to clean up those data issues and tourniquet the problem. Don't let the problems continue to happen, because otherwise you're continually distracted with cleanup. The next phase, once you've come out of that, you start to go into what I call optimization, and that's where organizations in the school district can look at, how do you get the most value out of this? You've got the thing stable. It may or may not be working to the best of your operational needs. Optimization kicks in to actually improve that and get your, get the most value for your investment. And finally, toward the life of the product, you get into maintenance mode where you're updating data tables, things that are just our annual cleanup. For example, ten ninety-nine is going to change their forms every year, and you got to clean, update that into the system, produce the ten ninety-nines and keep going. So what I'm going to suggest, while there, these aren't clean breaks, hard breaks, we're mostly in cleanup and fix at this point. The good news is, we still have a little bit of reaction, but that's settled, settled down. Now we've got the really hard work of cleaning up a lot of debt that's out there. Now I'm gonna give you an example of that as we get into current work. So accomplishments since the last report in December. The cyber organization had, at that point, one outstanding change request. It was a series of bug fixes and two hundred-plus queries and reports. Those were delivered. They have been paid. They have been, you know, made whole on it, and those are in use now, the the things that they delivered. We had a class in January on teaching the district staff on how to build queries. That's how to do data extracts out of the system, and that was completed. Now I'm doing it now. Oh, sorry. Keep away from the keyboard. I'm a mad guy, so you got to overlook me. Yeah. We had, for the first time out of PeopleSoft, deliver the W twos and ten ninety-nines. This is obviously a sensitive delivery. That we did make IRS regulations as far as delivery date. There were some corrections that came out of that, mostly driven by bad data that came into the system, or things that we didn't expect to come in, and that's a common theme in general, but we did do the W twos to, and ten ninety-nines to IRS regulations. We're in the middle, we have done the first round of DOE State reporting. We're kind of now in a cooling off, I call it a cooling off period, but we're not doing incremental uploads. That will kick off again toward the end of the month, first of April, with a look to complete in April. A little bit of statistics on this as of March sixth, so this is a little bit dated. Now, let me step back. The work we do now is all logged into tickets. It's like if you call in, report an issue with your cable TV, they're going to open a a service ticket to log that, and they close the ticket when the work's done. We're using a ticketing system now almost exclusively. And from that, we, from what we can tell as of last week, we've resolved one hundred and seventy-eight tickets in the last three months. One of the areas, it's one of my favorites, is around training. We have, since that last report period, we've delivered a hundred hours of face-to-face training. And I'll talk about face-to-face in just a second, the importance of that, but it's a combination of classroom, one-on-one, and open lab. One of the things I think we're all accepting of, it's unfortunate in some respects, but there's a lot of heat and passion and emotion around this, because it's it's work impacting. We get that. We understand that. So one of the ways we're trying to face this is with the ITOR customer service. So in the, in the case of training, we are trying to over-deliver on training needs. So for example, if we get a secretary or bookkeeper that's struggling, let's just use an example with their P card. How do you use it in PeopleSoft? Instead of sending them just a job aid, emailing that to them, we offer to go work one-on-one with that secretary or bookkeeper and deal with their issues. Invariably, we see there's not only P card issues, they'll have other questions about it. So we really try to extend the service hand here and 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 help them get past, whether it's misunderstandings or the system's not working as they would have expected it. Same with the open labs. We do an open lab, you know, we'll schedule, you know, a three-hour, we're going to be at this location to talk about these topics. Bring your favorite principal, bring your favorite bookkeeper, and we'll, we'll address whatever needs you are. And we've had some folks that come and take the whole three hours with us, and that's priceless. That's very important for us, and hopefully very valuable to the receiver of the training. We also, we have a support email alias that we take emails, questions through, our email reports of issues. If there are issues, report, we convert them into tickets, but we've responded to almost a thousand of those emails in the past three months. We get a tremendous number of these a day. A lot of them are just questions, lack of understanding. We do the training if it is. Some of them are reporting issues. We get, for example, some reports of performance through this mechanism, which is very valuable to us to to deal with the performance issues. So that's accomplishments since the last report. Current work items. The first item up there is P card cleanup and fix. As I mentioned, we're in cleanup and fix mode. I don't know how many hundreds of P card transactions were corrupt for various reasons. Some of it's just data error, or we hadn't locked down the system enough to prevent the error from happening. So we've had, with the help of the finance organization, a multi-week cleanup effort to get that cleaned up. It affected, you know, impacted the way we wanted to close books. I think the financials seem to be fine according to Heather and organization. There's still work to be done. We've got the tourniquets in place now, so we've stopped the bleeding on this one. But that's a very common model. We'll see that we've got corruption out there in some form. We've got to clean it up, but we need that fix in place to keep the problem from compounding itself. And that's exactly what had happened in P cards. The transactions in question went back to July one. That's how far back we had to take the cleanup process. how far, far back we had to take the cleanup process. We're almost finished with that, which is the cleanup process, and like I said, the fix is in place. Uh, we're still working with the finance organization to help streamline their monthly close and budgeting processes. We accept that there's some clunkiness in there. There's some cleanup required in there as well. What we do, when we uncover one of these areas, we form a quick team on how we're, and determine what the solutions are, how we're gonna get the cleanup done, and who's gonna, and what is the proposed fixes. Those don't all happen simultaneously, but we try to get that out upfront. Uh, we're in the middle of, of launching, I think the payroll run is next week, the, implementing the new salary increases, both raise and retropay, taking the sour, the re- raise situation back to July, or August, I guess. Um, and that's for this year. So that's another pay issue. So we're highly sensitive to that one. Um, I suspect there's gonna be a lot of support calls come from that because especially in retropay, where you're getting paid in, for time that you've already logged, people will want to know, where did you get that calculation? So I think we, it seems like we've got the technology, the algorithmic pieces of it down. We've got the data. There's, I just checked before I got up here. There's some last-minute tunes on what data needs to be uploaded and, but that will happen. I'm predicting that will be, it won't be completely without incident, but I, hopefully it will be not that dramatic. There will be a lot of questions, which is understandable. Like I mentioned earlier, we're in a complete state reporting in the next, uh, month, in, by the month of, in the, in April. I threw in here, one of the things I'm, I'm focused on personally, pro- productivity. And this isn't productivity of the external departments. This is productivity of the team, how we interact with the external players, not external, they're not on the team. But an example, and this may not come across much as a productivity enhancer, but communication with these highly complex systems and so many players involved, all the way from end-users to the, in, in inside stakeholders and my team is critical. So how we communicate really makes a difference. So right now, as an example in this category, there's a very legitimate question, and some of my friends in the other departments, who I think will support this. What is the status of the work that's impacting my organization? Very legitimate question to ask. Up until now, we've not had a systematic way to push that information out. So what happens is, an individual email request, tell me about ticket X, Y, and Z, or I bump into somebody in the hall, get this question. Well, this is hugely unproductive, not to mention it contributes to the frustration. So we're not there yet, but I'm looking at a systematic way to push the status out, say, once a week, whatever frequency that makes sense, so that our, our, the fellow departments we're working with, they can click on tickets to the heart's content and get a quick summary of what's going on, when it's expected, and so on. That will reduce a tremendous amount of, it's good conversation because it's necessary, but there's a more efficient way to do that and keep that from becoming, you know, a hindrance to getting more work done. So that's just an example. So this is a longer-term look from my point of view, and then I'm gonna, I've got roughly five minutes. I want to, I want to save enough time for risk. There are employee recruiting's now currently with an application called Taleo. That's how I joined the company, is using Taleo as an outside user. Uh, PeopleSoft has a recruiting module. Why it was not implemented, I don't understand the history, really doesn't matter. I'm just, we're just trying to look forward. So we're going to, originally this was planned on going out this quarter, the, uh, early this year. The team is so slammed right now with mission critical. Not that recruiting's not mission critical, but we have a solution for recruiting with Taleo. May not be the preferred answer. We, in, in lieu of inhibiting something else, and I get, I've given you a few examples of what we've been working on. The teams with the, the support of HR, which we're in, you know, full agreement with, we're gonna shift that to September, October launch of Oracle, or PeopleSoft recruiting. Uh, subsequent DOE staff surveys, that, there's, you know, there's a whole category of things that come our way that we know are district critical, like the DOE staff surveys, and our goal is to get better at doing that every time and reduce the amount of effort required to be effective at the surveys. And from what I can see, we're, we're making progress. We're not perfect yet, but we do make progress. The next one, I'm, you're, you're probably gonna think, well, why'd you put this one on here? PeopleSoft, the application, the physical application we're on is out of date. They've had, just like with your personal computers, they push updates regularly. You can accept those or not. We're in that boat here. Now, we don't have any security issues with those updates. This is functionality or bug fixes and things like that. The issue and the reason for putting it on there is we are out of date. We accept that. We accept the fact that these upgrades need to be applied. Every time you do that in a PeopleSoft environment that's highly customized, you run the risk of breaking those customizations. The, the PeopleSoft people don't know of our customization, so there's a whole install and upgrade, test, 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 push it to production. So that will consume some, uh, cycles with us in Agittec, but it's absolutely important that we do stay current. Because otherwise, you'll get an Apple, a PeopleSoft instance that is not supportable by PeopleSoft. They will cut off, just like Microsoft does. They cut off, you, you call out the Windows seven question to Microsoft, they're just gonna laugh at you. And that's the kind of risk, longer term that we stand. So once we get this in place, get current, I mean, we'll have a regular schedule on keeping those upgrades rolling, and this will become much, much less of an issue. I've got on here, strategic delivery user training. And the reason for putting that on there, we can't train everybody on everything exactly when they need it. We're gonna provide good service here, but we want to be selective. So if we see we're having issues, for example, like P-cards, we focus just on that P-card because the downstream effect of not having good solid training is hugely costly to the organization. So we'll continue to do that. And you, I'm, I'm running out of time, and I've got to get to the last one, if you don't mind. It may be time for questions. So this is coming from many years of doing this. In the context around that, you know, we talk about PeopleSoft, we talk about ERP. It's really about people. Yeah, we've got products, we've got licenses and things like that. But every time we say PeopleSoft, there are real names of people that are behind that, either trying to fix it and make it better, or supporting and so on. So we, we're at the, and this is a good thing and it's a weakness. We are, the, the biggest risk is if we lose, lose these highly-trained individuals at this point. Um, I've lost one out of frustration and burnout, not to go through details, not important. I'm losing one internally to an internal transfer, different reasons. Each one of those replacements are now required to have PeopleSoft skills. And this is not a comment about Bradenton, but there are not a lot of PeopleSoft people in Bradenton and Manatee County. Same with Sarasota County. This is not Seattle. This is not Silicon Valley, or Atlanta for that matter. So we got to be really careful that we're respectful of these folks, listen to their needs. I'm not saying pander to them because I'm not a leader that does that, but we got to be really sensitive to what they could do to this organization if we've had a ma- mass exodus. Likewise, Agittec, and I'm not gonna sit here and, you know, have any comments about strengths of Agittec, but they're critical to our success at this point. Very critical. So we got to be aware of that. They have a renewal clause that allows them to renew or not renew with us, and likewise us in the September timeframe. So I'm not sure what they would choose, and I don't have any inside knowledge from Agittec. I'm just flagging it as, they are very critical. If we wanted to change horses on that one, that's a big, that's a big decision at this point. So I'm not saying that, you know, they're perfect. Like, likewise, my teams aren't perfect either, but I just want to make you aware that I think those are your biggest risk, and it's not the technology. The technology has po- problems. It is flawed in some areas, but we need those people to fix those problems.
Okay.
Questions?
Um, Board Member Kennedy, it's, uh, we're, we're gonna have to close.
This is, this is really quick.
Okay.
It's, um, um, and, and Nick, you're, you're, you are closing on exactly what I want to touch on. And that is, um, I feel like this is a little bit of de, of a deja vu because when we were going through the, the, the upgrade to PeopleSoft, um, you know, the board can, kept asking, if you need resources, let us know. We will support you. We will support you. And I want to get a consensus of the board to say the same thing to Superintendent Saunders. We have invested quite a bit here, and if you need more resources to, to shore up internal, to shore up, uh, Agittec, wherever the, wherever our people concerns are, um, I want to get a consensus of the board that if Superintendent has to come to us and say, "Hey, I need some more to shore up our people and our staff," that we as a board will promise to be there to provide those resources.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Nick.
You're welcome.
We're, we're gonna be closing up now, but this has been one wonderful workshop, and, uh, thank you all for attending. And, uh, before Michelle hangs me up here for not giving her enough time, uh, we're gonna close this workshop. So, thank you.
Thank you.